Before we start the meeting, I'd like to read a motion by Governor Greg Abbott regarding these meetings. And this is it. On March 13, 2020, Governor Greg Abbott issued a declaration of emergency as a result of the COVID-19 virus outbreak. Subsequently, on March 16, 2020, pursuant to the authority granted in the declaration, Governor Abbott temporarily suspended the application of certain provisions of the Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551, in order to permit telephonic open meetings. This was an effort to mitigate the spread of the COVID-19 virus by avoiding large group meetings while still ensuring continued government operations and preserving transparency in the decision-making process. Pursuant to this authority, Tarrant County College District gave notice of its intent to conduct today's Board of Trustees' meeting as a telephonic and video conference open meeting. Six trustees will participate in this meeting by video conference. Dr. Patrick, are you there? We'll do a roll call at the same time. Dr. Patrick is present?
Yes.
Ms. Ayala?
Present.
Now, Dr. Morrison is on voice. Mr. She will join us later on video. Mr. Greenhill? Are you present?
I'm present.
Mr. Barr?
Present.
And Dr. Evans?
I am present.
Okay, each will state his or her name before making any comment during the meeting. Actually, we don't need to do that except for Dr. Morrison because we can, we're doing video conference. So I will call the work session meeting of the Board of Trustees of May 14 to order. We do have three public comments and Carol Bracken will read those, I believe. Carol?
Do you want us to read those at the board meeting or here at the work session?
They're supposed to be read at the, at the work session. Carol?
Okay.
Is that right?
We normally read them at the board meeting, but we didn't.
Okay, no, that's, that's fine, but I was told they were going to be done here as well. Either way. Okay, we'll, we'll just hold those off till the board meeting. Item three is review of board business items. Have you, board, have you reviewed the minutes of the April 9th and the April 16th meeting? And are there any changes? Barring none, we'll go to item four, which is the review of proposed consent agenda items for board meetings to be held on May 21st, 2020. Item A is consideration and approval of deductive change order with Trevino Group by air handling units and air volume system replacements. Phase two project at the Irma C. Johnson Hadley Northwest Center of Excellence, an amount of 403,549 dollars and 17 cents, and that's a credit. Susan?
Yeah, so this is just returning some of the contingency that was unnecessary.
Okay, any comments or questions?
This is Teresa. I do have a question, please.
Sure.
Susan, I was noticing here in the change order that there are three parties to the change. Summit is one of them, Trevino Group, and TCC. Is Summit the prime here, or why are they a party to this particular change order? Summit Consult?
I'm gonna have to get you an answer on that, but the, the, the change order should be reflective of whoever was committed to do the work and who would have been owed the money originally. But, but I can, I can get more detail for you.
Okay, I'm just trying to clarify whether they're the prime and then this is a subcontractor or not. Because I just found it interesting that they were a party to this change order. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Item 4B, consideration and approval of contract amendment for the sale of additional acreage, 0.346 acres to Bassem Al Namiri and Raba K. Namiri at the northeast corner of West Harwood Drive and Precinct Line Road in the amount of $391,650 paid to the college. Ms. Al Nice?
Yeah, so you may recall that last fall, you approved the, or authorized the sale of this property that is surplus up adjacent to Northeast Campus. Since that time, the, the potential buyer has requested to expand the space to have additional parking. And so we settled on an additional fee of $90,650, and the anticipated closing is by June the 26th.
Okay, I, I had a couple of questions. One, I assume that they have, that's a corner, a very busy corner. I assume they'll have access to one of the city streets?
Yes, so they'll have to conform to city, city rules around access. And there's an exhibit that shows what the current site plan is and how they would access that. That part.
And, and what about access for our students? I mean, would they be able to, it seems like that's a student-oriented coffee shop. Would our students be able to walk over there, or how do they get there? Do they have to drive?
So the, the property buyer would not be responsible for ensuring that pedestrian access, but it's certainly, certainly something that a real estate business group could take a look at and see what we could accomplish.
Okay. And if, if they were to walk over there, we don't know what kind of fences they're gonna build and, or be required to build.
So if we can go back to the site plan, perhaps?
Yeah.
There we go. I, I don't, I don't see that they intend to, to fence it, you know, where there would be any controlled access there. So we'll, we can, we can contact the property owner and see if there's an opportunity there for pedestrian access. I, I would assume that they would want to generate that business from our students, so.
I would think so. I noticed that the minerals were reserved, which is good. Who is, who is gonna be responsible, you know, there's a, we have that pond there, and there's a drainage ditch that runs right through the middle of that property. Who is gonna be responsible for maintaining that drainage ditch? And, and of course, the, 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 the dam there at the end of the pond. I guess that's still our property, so. What about the drainage ditch?
That we would have to maintain, they will be required to comply with a stormwater permit with their, with the city at that point to ensure that they don't create any additional drainage onto our property that wouldn't have already exist. But we will still be responsible for maintenance of what's on our property.
Okay. And just as one missing word there. On page one, you, the, let's see, the third sentence, it says also, "The stores host a variety of church and community meetings conducted in a large dedicated inside the coffee shop." I assume you want area in there. A dedicated area, is that correct?
We will take a look at that.
Should have paragraph above those photographs.
Yes, sir.
Okay, we can, we can get that fixed.
Yes.
4C, consideration approval of the, of an inter-local agreement for one year, with a one-year option to renew with the City of Arlington for access to the demand rideshare program by Southeast Campus students. This does not involve any financial commitment.
That's correct. So you may recall that the college partnered a bit ago with Trinity Metro to provide bus passes to our students to be able to be used to get to school as well as their other transportation needs. City of Arlington is not served by Trinity Metro. They've been piloting Via Rideshare on-demand service, and they've expanded the geographic area that that covers at this point. And so the Council of Governments has actually agreed to fund for our students to be able to access that service in, in Arlington. Right now, students who attend Southeast Campus really only have the point-to-point service that Trinity Metro provides between South Campus and Southeast, and that's it. So this will expand their ability to have public transportation in, in the city of Arlington.
That's outstanding. And this is a, it's an on-demand program, meaning that any student can call in and get, get a ride?
That's right. If, if you've used Via before in other cities, it's, it's basically like, you know, their competitors, Uber and Lyft, but they, they have an effort to aggregate riders into single trips to reduce the number of, of individual trips. And that, that's who City of Arlington has contracted with to provide that on-demand service. And so the students would have access to the app to be able to, to request car service in line with whatever the, the rules of engagement are for all the other citizens. And the cost right now will be covered by COG.
And this is a two-year program, and COG is covering the expenses for one year?
They, they are, and the, the uncertainty right now is how significant the demand will be. And so we, contractually, we've agreed that we'll continue to evaluate that to understand any parameters that ought to be placed around it over time and how far the COG funding will go over time.
Is there a chance they will fund it for the second year?
There, there certainly is. I, I think that, again, it's just a matter of us figuring out how well it works and how significant the demand is on the front end.
Mr. President, I have a question.
Yes.
Article four says termination. "This agreement may be canceled at any time by the city or TCC with or without cause with seven days' notice." Is that enough time? I mean, we're talking about a year contract. Either one can cancel it seven, within seven days. Does that give you enough time to tell students that we're, you're not gonna be able to get on the bus and that sort of thing?
Well, since there's, there's not bus service out there today, so this is an add-on service that they don't currently have access to. And in all of our marketing to the students, we will make sure that it's very clear that this is a temporary pilot and that it's, it's only going to, to last as long as we're able to fund it and reach an agreement with the city and so that they're, they're clear that it, it may not continue into perpetuity.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Item 4D, consideration and approval of a revised mineral investment section of the TCC investment policy and strategy. And we're gonna have a presentation on this later, correct?
That is correct. And, and you may recall that this actually is, is the final step in what you started last fall, where we updated the mineral management agreement with the foundation. And you directed staff to work with our financial advisor to update our investment policy, which you've received today. And then one of the briefings will be from our financial advisor to walk you through the contents of that.
Okay, and that'll be later on in this, in this question. Okay. So any, any questions? I, I would suggest that we hold those off until we get that presentation. Okay, item 4E, consideration and approval of amendments to Tasby Local Policy EGAA grading and credit by examination. Dr. LeBlanc? Hello, Elba?
I don't seem to hear her. I don't know if anyone else can.
I can't either.
Okay.
Yes, she's muted, guys.
We're checking here. Until we get Dr. LeBlanc, let's, let's table.
Technician is working with her.
Okay, let's table that, and we'll also table items five A and B. We review these proposed individual action items for board meeting on May 21st. And we'll go with 5C, consideration and approval of contract with Texas Refrigeration for multiple air handling unit upgrades in the power plant building on the Northeast Campus in the amount of $259,175.23.
Yes, and this is ongoing up, equipment upgrade to replace infrastructure that.
Can you hear me now? No, I can't hear them.
Yes, I hear you.
Dr. LeBlanc?
Okay. Are you there?
Hello, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
No.
Okay, let's go back, let's go back to 4E, consideration and approval.
Sorry about that.
Hello?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Consideration and approval.
Is he ready for me?
Yes.
Okay, I apologize. We tested everything before the meeting began, and it worked really well right before the meeting. So this is a, a recommendation for the change in the name of the policy, which is EGAA Local, and the name change would be Prior Learning Assessment. And also, we are separating policy from processes and procedures and have created a Prior Learning Assessment guidelines. So the policy that we're asking for your approval on is the Prior Learning Assessment policy. And it allows students to demonstrate that they have acquired a skill, whether it's through an exam or actually showing the skill, and for them to get credit for that. And that's why we call it Prior Learning Assessment. And I'm open for questions.
Does this make it, I, I know it makes it clear for students because there's been some questions in the past, but does this make it easier, do you think, for students to get that credit?
Well, it's more, it, it more clearly defines what we are able to do as a college. And, and yes, so an example of that would be the students that take, get certified as a firefighter. The certification is in non-credit. They work for a year, come back, and they can do the Prior Learning Assessment, and that would count toward a degree of fighting at some point. They do need to be an, a registered student to apply.
Okay.
Dr. LeBlanc, this is Michael Evans. Is this like way back in the day when we had the, I think they called it like the CLEP exams or something like that?
Yes.
Okay.
It's all of those different kinds. It's all of those different kinds of evaluations. And that's why it's important to change the name to Prior Learning Assessment. Yes, sir.
All right, I took you back a ways, I know.
Dr. LeBlanc, I saw the word several times that the student can quote, "challenge" some decisions. What does that mean? I mean, does challenge mean they just, tell me more about challenge. Is it a really a challenge or just, I want to review this?
Right. So they might take an, let's say it's an exam, and they may take it and they didn't earn a grade that would allow them to get credit because they didn't demonstrate they knew the information. And they might come back and say, well, you know, the test was not very clear, or, you know, they can challenge it. You have to give them due process. But it ends at the Vice President for Academic Affairs.
No hearings with the board?
No, sir. That's why you were worried. No, sir.
No, I'm kidding.
So is there a, I haven't read the whole policy, but if someone has taken courses 10 years ago, 20 years ago, do they, can they apply for this? Or is it has to be current? Or is there a time?
Right. So they have to be currently a student at Tarrant County College.
Okay.
If they've taken coursework before, that should be on their transcript and should count toward their degree. But this is, this is for relevant education, work, or other life experience that they may be able to demonstrate they have the skill or the knowledge.
Any other questions, discussion?
Yes, just one more. It said, Dr. LeBlanc, it says fees for processing this assessment will be set by the board. Will we approve this? Will we have approved fees? I see that there is a, some guidelines, very extensive guidelines in the, in the back part of this presentation.
That's correct. So the board does approve all student fees. And you typically get an entire document that would list this among the fees.
But we're not doing that at this time?
No, sir.
No?
You have, right.
Okay.
Okay. We'll move over to item five, which is review of proposed individual action items for board meet, for the board meeting on May 21st of 2020. Item A is ratification of payment to Examity for remote proctoring fees for the Texas Success Initiative, TSI, assessment used for TCC student placement testing for an estimated cost of $450,000. Dr. LeBlanc?
Yes. So when we moved to online learning, we also had to move to online testing. And that was a little bit more of a challenge. We work with Accuplacer is the company that produces the Texas Success Initiative Assessment. And they are offering the proctoring, online proctoring through Examity, which is the company we chose to work with. And there is a fee. It's the proctoring fee is $20 per session. And TCC will cover the fee of proctoring up to three sessions for new students and returning students. If someone wants to take the exam that's not a student of Tarrant County College, then they would have to pay the full fee. But we had to act quickly in order to allow our future students and current students to take the placement test so they could get registered for summer and fall.
Okay, is any of this going to be reimbursed by the CARES Act?
Yes, we anticipate. We're pulling a list of items such as this one to submit for the reimbursement through the CARES Act. Yes, sir.
Super. Any other questions?
Yes, I have a question. Thank you for that summary, Dr. LeBlanc. Because this is going to be paid by some of the funds from the CARES?
Yes.
My question is, are there any groups of students that would not be eligible for this, for these vouchers? And the reason I'm asking is because I know under the CARES funding, there are some stipulations about certain criteria for eligible students. And I didn't know if this would apply to these students as well.
So that very well may apply. We are still learning a lot about which, what will count and what will not, which is why we are documenting very carefully. We suspect that most of the individuals that take the online do qualify. Just for your information, we also selected alternates to the TSI. So that if someone is unable to take the TSI online because they don't have the devices or whatever reason they may have, we could still admit them and allow them to register with Tarrant County College using the alternate methods, which are like the ACT, a score of 23 or higher. And there's a whole list that the VPAs pulled together.
Okay. I'm really, and thank you for that. I just wanted to make sure that there would be students, all students would be eligible for this. That's all I'm trying to make sure that there would be no, somebody particularly that's not a, somebody that's an undocumented student would still be eligible for the, for these vouchers and that type of thing. That's what I'm concerned about. So.
Yes.
Thank you for clarifying that for me.
Yes.
I do have another question, if I may. Go ahead, Mr. Heed. In the explanation, there's a reference about each campus handles their waiver and it lists all of the different campuses. So does this mean that there's a different process for each campus? Or did you explain that a little bit?
It's the same process.
Okay.
It's that each campus has a testing center, and the testing center staff know how to do the waivers and would be connecting with the students and assisting us in getting all the paperwork done. It's very labor-intensive in terms of the vouchers and keeping up with all the students. And that's how we were able to divide the labor.
Okay.
Yes.
Ms. Sale, let me clarify it just a bit. The CARES Act funding does have some limitations, but that does not mean that the college itself cannot support these vouchers for the testing.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
Yeah.
Self will pay these. Some of it, most of them will be CARES-eligible, perhaps all depending upon how it's counted.
Okay. Thank you for that, Dr. Jovanini.
Hello, this is Gwen Morrison. May I ask a question?
Sure.
I simply want to know how this measures up to our commitment to be an open enrollment college?
I'm not sure. I understand your question. The.
The. Let me ask it a different way.
Okay.
Is any student that would normally be eligible, I want to make sure that any student who would normally be eligible to enroll is not during this time eligible to enroll? How are we making certain that that's not the case?
Well, we've moved everything, I'm not sure I understand fully, but we've moved everything online. And we have all of our staff responding to students regardless of what their questions may be to get them registered. And we will get them registered. We've also made arrangements to have the devices available for students to check out. So we've gone through a lot of steps that I didn't mention earlier to ensure that the students are able to take the test online if they choose to. There, otherwise, we have other ways in which to get them accepted and allow them to register. I'm hoping I'm answering your question.
Yes, so I just want to be sure that we are vigorously communicating to the public that we're still open, we're accepting enrollments, we're working vigorously with students in every situation to ensure that they can continue to pursue their education during this time.
Yes, yes, we are. We are. And if you check our website, you'll see that we've added a lot of information to support students as they transition to online, not only for the online learning, but also the registration.
That's great. Thank you.
Thank you for that question.
Any other comments or comments? Item 5B, consideration and approval of a three-year master agreements with communication access, real-time translation for indefinite delivery, indefinite quantity interpreting services for the college district in the amount of $500,000 not to exceed. Dr. LeBlanc?
Yes, so we have Board Policy GA Legal and also Americans with Disabilities Act, which require that we support all of our students. And in this case, we should offer interpreting for the deaf. And what this is, these are services that will allow us to support that effort. We are recommending a cluster of vendors. There are seven vendors. Most of them, three to four, have the highest rating and they are local. And the campuses don't ever know really how many of these interpreters they will need from day to day. And so we need to have multiple vendors that they can contact and ensure that the interpreter is with the student or the employee for that matter. And so that's why we're recommending this. And it's a three-year master agreement.
I do have one concern. Under your recommendation in a memo, it says we're making orally delivered information available to individuals who are dead. I, I don't think we need to be doing that to the people.
No, no, good catch.
So please, please.
We'll make sure they're alive. Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Questions, comments?
I do have a question, but I think this is really more along the lines for Mike Herndon. Is Ms. Alleni still on, are you still available, Susan?
I'm here.
Thanks. I just have a quick question on the part of the documentation that was provided to us also reflects the interpreting in cart services as far as, I guess, the average scores and evaluations. So I just wanted to ask, one of the evaluation criteria mentions reputation of suppliers. How is that determined? Do you know?
I'm sorry, are you talking about the translation services?
Yes, yes.
Generally, it would be with reference checks and who their current clients are and that kind of thing.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
I can't speak specifically to this one, but I'm assuming it's along those lines.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? We'll move on to five C, consideration and approval of contract with Texas Refrigeration, Inc. for multiple air handling upgrade, unit upgrades in, the wording is not correct here, for a power plant building on a Northeast Campus in the amount of $259,175.23.
Yes, this is ongoing equipment upgrades for infrastructure that's at the end of its useful line.
Questions, discussion? Item 5D, consideration and approval of contract with Freedom Construction for renovation of non-destructive testing and inspection classroom and lab at the Hermacy Johnson Hadley Northwest Center of Excellence in the amount of $731,778.
Yes, and you may recall that there's a new Associate of Applied Science degree here in non-destructive testing and inspection. And so this is doing the renovations that are necessary to have a classroom for that.
And this is just for construction? It doesn't include the equipment?
That's correct. The total project budget is $1.6 million, and it's noted at the bottom. But so this is the construction portion of that.
Okay. Questions, discussion? Item 5E, consideration and approval of contracts with multiple suppliers to purchase welding equip, a lab equipment for both Hermacy Johnson Hadley Northwest Center of Excellence and South Campus, the amount of $992,877.14.
Yes. And so you've had a number of items before you with the expansion of the welding program. And this is the procurement of the equipment to equip both the South Campus as well as the Northeast Center of Excellence.
Questions, discussion? Item 5F, consideration and approval of contract with Sunt Construction for the District Staff Relocation Project on a Trinity River Campus in the amount of $23 million, $23,347,814.
Yes. So you may recall a couple of years ago, the decision was made to consolidate administrative staff up at Trinity River and to place the Mayo and Center on the market for sale. And so since that time, we've been going through a design exercise to renovate the tower to accommodate staff and to equip it for staff's use. It's 133,000 square feet, so it's a big space. And this is the construction portion of the contract. You'll note that the total project budget, when you include all the soft costs, including design, FFNE and so on, is $31.8 million.
And the only offsets are, or the offsets are, the sale of the Mayo and Center to Omni and also the TCC Foundation rents at the Water Garden, right?
That is correct. And the rest of the project is funded from fund balance and our renewal and replacement fund that we fund our capital projects fund from. It's available in the fund balance there.
Okay.
I do have a quick question, if you don't mind, Mr. Heed.
Certainly.
I'm sorry, could you just kind of give us an idea or at some point what this is going to be per square foot as far as the renovation, please, and the number of people?
Yes, the cost per square foot is, for construction, is $164 without contingencies and $174 per square foot with contingencies. When you add in FFNE, it goes up to $238 per square foot with contingencies. And the number of people, I know this, but I need to, let me, let me double-check it and get an answer. You can see all the departments associated with it, but I'll get you a specific number on the number of employees.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
Yeah, Ms. Heed, I've got a question. I see where this is going to accommodate, says approximately, the new space design will accommodate the relocation of approximately 206 people. In regard to, to this, are we making any changes to the exterior or anything of that nature?
No, there's, there's no changes to the exterior. But beyond the staff accommodation, it's also new boardroom facilities. We have a conference center where we can hold larger meetings and so on. So there's a number of shared spaces in addition to the workspace associated with employees.
Okay.
This sounds, this is a very large number.
Yeah.
You know, this per square foot cost, is that, you have more experience than this, is that comparable to others? I mean, you could build whole buildings for that, it would seem. But how does that compare to other renovations that we've done in the past?
It is. I think that it's pretty consistent with the cost per square foot that we budget for. We do tend to make sure that we use very durable materials so that it'll last a long time versus, you know, you know, sometimes in, in, um, government, uh, construction, you may, you may see um, budget constraints that require you to use some lesser materials, but we think for the long haul of the facility, it makes sense, um, the, the design that's been done.
This is Gwen Morrison. I have a question. Not, not recalling the configuration or the plans, the specifics of the, uh, renovations that are being done. Are those plans being revisited in view of the conversation that's surfacing now about the change in workspace, um, due to the current, uh, COVID-nineteen virus and other potential threats?
Yes, we, we've actually had those conversations with our architects about, um, how to make sure that we, um, we design common and shared spaces in such a way that there's enough room for people to be able to not be crowded. Even simple things like, um, the main doors into the space, um, automatically opening, so everybody doesn't touch the, you know, the, the door knob to get in, and, and bathrooms and so on. And it is still a, a fairly open configuration, um, uh, to, to facilitate some of the collaboration that we intend to do for the long haul. However, we would have, you know, similar challenges in, um, our existing facilities where, where we've got, uh, you know, cubicle space and so on. But, um, active conversation with architects for all of our projects about anything that we might want to consider, um, as, as appropriate, uh, in response.
Go ahead, go ahead, Dr. Mars.
I, I was gonna thank you for that, and I think it's very important to think about, um, not building a twenty-nineteen structure that's going to be serving us in twenty-twenty-one and beyond.
Yep.
Uh, it's like when you built, drew the plans for your dream house ten years ago. You know, you shouldn't be building that house now because too many things have changed and upgraded. And so I'm just hoping that we take a pause and really look forward as we embark on this, make certain that we are employing the most advanced techniques, structures, and, uh, technologies that will, uh, enable our work to go forward in the future, even if it takes a little more time to backtrack and do it.
Yes.
Susan and Dr. G, I'm just curious, and, and, uh, maybe our board members can help me. Have we seen any drawings, elevation, have we, uh, we seen that ourselves as a board? We may have, and maybe I'm just, maybe it's on me, I forgot, I don't. Have we seen anything yet?
Uh, I'm sorry, we have, we have not provided copies of the floor plates to you. We've been working with staff to, to finalize adjacencies and so on. Just this past week, we started to see some, um, renderings, um, some 3D renderings about what the materials and so on might look, like. Uh, we'd be happy to, to share, um, what information we have with you at this point, but we have not provided that today. We're, we're sort of just at that point now with architects.
Okay, and ju- just for transparency, you know, we, we built, we built a hundred thirty-five unit apartment, uh, complex for nineteen million dollars. So, you know, that, that's, and that was just last year, so that's why I'm, I'm asking, you know, uh, that question. And, uh, uh, ju- again, just full transparency, and, and maybe, maybe my fellow board members, you know, they have a better scope of it than I do. I'm, I personally am just kind of blown away by that number. I mean, if, if there are not going to be any, um, y- you know, brick and mortar changes, I, I guess, you know, I'd say that in my own simple way, but, uh, that, that, that's why I'm just, I just want to see what in the world is that going to look like, uh, you know, just for Michael's seat. So, I'll be quiet and, uh, but maybe it's me. I appreciate.
And, and the other thing I'll add is the total project cost also is in anticipation of audiovisual needs and, and, and so on, not only the board, but also the staff and, and the shared workspaces, and so it, it includes towards the future for all of that as well.
Uh, this is Kenneth. Uh, I, I'd like to echo what, uh, Dr. Evans is saying. I think you need to bring us an overview of what the plan is, uh, uh, and a, and a breakdown of, you know, we're talking about twenty-three million dollars, and then we talk about thirty-one million dollars. Uh, some sort of a breakdown of what's involved in, uh, in the entire expenditure here. And, and beyond that, what other expenses are going, are we going to encounter to get into this space?
So, I, I will share with you that the total project cost is intended to be all-in, so it's, it's planning for our, our cost to commission the space and to move and, and those kinds of things is what the intent is, but, but we'd be happy to get you some additional information.
So, so this includes the cost of the actual moving?
That's correct.
Okay, well, I, I think, uh, we need a little bit of a breakdown if we can before we vote on this, if possible.
This is Gwen Morrison. I have another question. So does this include prospective furnishings as well?
Yes, the total budget of, of the thirty-one million does include all the furniture fixtures and equipment associated with it.
So is that included in the square foot price?
So I, I gave you two square foot prices. One was for construction only and one was intended to be all-in. Um, and, and we can get you a better summary of that so that you can, you can see that more clearly.
I think that would be helpful.
We'd be happy to do that.
So I'm, I want, I don't want to impede progress, however, I want us to move forward knowing what we're moving forward toward and with. So, I would say that as much of a clear understanding as I can get and other board members can get, I think it would empower us to feel more comfortable moving forward.
Okay.
So, we, we can certainly provide, um, the drawings and, and all-inclusive as to where we are right today. A couple of other points worth mentioning, we talked about two hundred and six employees. Those are not just the employees at the MLC. Those are employees throughout the district that are moving to a central location for us to be able to operate more efficiently, where people have been spread out, um, over a number of years. And for what it's worth, um, not too long ago, three or four months ago, that number was thirty-eight million, um, and it's, it's now thirty-one. Um, so it's just, just from a point that there has been some work done on that, but we'll certainly get you all the, all the detail that we have to date. Um, uh, prior to next week, for sure.
Any other questions, discussion? Okay, item five G, consideration and approval of contract with Air Balancing Company, Inc. For test and balance services on the district staff relocation project in the amount of two hundred and thirty-five thousand, two hundred and thirty-five thousand, six hundred dollars. Ms. Alanise?
Yes, so this is included in the total project that we were just talking about, but it's a separate contract to, um, get the company on board to deal with, uh, with, um, uh, ensuring that there's proper flows of air and water through the HVAC system, um, associated, uh, with the engineering, um, uh, records design. And so it's, uh, important that we, um, uh, apparently it's got a fairly unusual system in that building, and so we need to make sure that we've got expertise in there to, uh, to ensure the, uh, the equipment is functioning and being used properly with the new design.
So this is an analysis of the situation that doesn't include construction work?
They, they go in and ensure that it's, it's working in accordance with, um, it's not just an analysis. They go in and ensure that it's working in con- in accordance with the engineer's design. They actually design it and they, they do the testing and balancing effort.
Any other questions, discussion? Item five H, consideration approval of contracts with multiple vendors for provisional classroom upgrades in, I guess, at multiple locations in the amount of two hundred sixty-two thousand, seven hundred fifty-five dollars and six cents.
Yes, so you've seen a series of these as we've been doing our classroom renovation plans, and so this just continues that effort. Um, just to be clear, you, you've heard us talk about Twenty-Fourth Century Classrooms, which have been, uh, renamed to the Formal Learning Environment, and those are the classrooms that have sort of all the bells and whistles in terms of, um, the technology that's required and so on. Um, and they have the space to be able to really do the full, um, treatment of a Twenty-Fourth Century Classroom. Provisional classrooms are ones that will likely be upgraded in the future, but may not be the highest priority right now, or maybe, um, or, or perhaps, um, we don't have as many, uh, instructors that are trained in the ALA, um, uh, the, um, Active Learning Env- um, Academy at that location. And so it's, it's getting the, the basics of what needs to happen in those classrooms now and preparing them for that next phase of, of AV equipment and so on that would be installed at a later date.
Mr. Heed, I've got a question. Um, along the lines of, uh, Dr. Morrison's question, um, a couple of items ago, or one item ago, maybe. And that is, and, uh, Diane, of course, is, um, our professor. Uh, she can help me here, and Diane, you can, you can help me to know if I'm off base here, but, you know, um, Dr. Morrison said, and she is correct, that, um, we are now in a, well, we're not in a post-COVID environment yet, uh, but, uh, we will be, you know, so I'll be the preacher on the line. I'll be the optimist soon, sooner than later. Uh, but, but, but there are going to have to be some design changes, and I was wondering about this, Diane, and you can help me. In our classrooms, you know, I, I know that we're putting up Plexiglas, uh, you know, we're not, uh, you know, to separate students and all that stuff. And i- in, with this, with this new active learning environment that we're in now, it called for more, uh, close proximity collaboration. I mean, where students are, I mean, they're just right across the desk technically, not even a desk anymore, from each other. Um, what calculations, uh, Dr. G, have we made, uh, i- in, in regard to that? I mean, uh, are we even going to be able to be as close, uh, to students or student to instructor uh, now? And of course, I, you know, again, all of this caught us off guard, but h- how much recalculations are we doing, uh, in regard to these designs? And, and Susan, this is not for you, I guess. This would be for Dr. G and even, um, um, Dr. Patrick. I mean, because you're in that environment, you're there, and, uh, we've been thinking about it, uh, from church side, you know, institutional wise. So, I'll just throw that out there for, y'all, y'all help me.
So, in, in our particular case, and I think in most particular cases, it's going to be, what's the measurement? Um, if, if the, if, if you have to live to live six feet away the rest of your life, it's going to be problems for everybody. Uh, we're not anticipating having to live six feet away from each other for the rest of our lives. So, um, so that would be one, uh, you know, a, a very, very large consideration. I think the other then would be come around the safety as it relates to cleanliness um, of, of, of face, as well as people's individual personal responsibility. How long do we wear fake masks, um, i- in terms of the immediacy here, and does that live for a while? So, um, I don't know if anyone has a, a complete answer, other than saying, you know, you gotta live by what is the standard way in which we're, well, living it. And right now, it's, it's, it's by six feet, it's with masks. Um, I don't, I don't think most people anticipate six forever. Um, so, uh, I, I would say in the long run, I don't, I don't, I, I don't know, uh, if it, if it, uh, makes, um, much consideration at this time, uh, without any certainty. Um, certainly you can take, um, uh, desks and the configuration of a classroom and do it a variety of different ways, and so that's always implied. And can we do that with six feet away? Absolutely. We may have to shrink some size of classes and such in order to do so. Um, so that's, that's the physical nature. The second one, uh, really speaks to how the class is conducted, and you alluded to that. You know, are students going to work side by side, uh, ever work side by side, or how might they work side by side? And, and so, uh, again, that gets back to what are the restrictions of how, how, um, how close people might be able to be. Um, but so there's a fit, there's a, there's the, the equipment, the room setup size, the furniture of consideration, and then the actual, uh, people piece of it and how they interact.
Other things that are being considered are various options that are hybrids of both online learning and classroom, uh, and things like students would come to class once a week and, and another set of students in the same class might come another day of the week. It wouldn't all be there at the same time, for example. As, as a temporary measure to get through this and accommodate, uh, the same number of students, but in a different way.
I, I, I appreciate that, and I'm just wondering, you know, and of course, uh, Jean, you all are living in this world every day. Of course, we are not. I, I'm just wondering about, uh, what, um, some of the conventional wisdom is now. And you, and, and we're in a tight spot. I mean, it's not like we know what tomorrow's going to bring, so please don't hear me there. I, I'm, I'm wondering if, uh, we might be considering, uh, not necessarily funds going away, but a shifting in funds. You said something, I think that's, that's important. And that is, you know, we might have fewer students in a class. Uh, so then if we do that, we're going to have to, to accommodate that other group somewhere else. So, you know, whereas our dollars are presently going into, uh, you know, what we thought was the model, uh, the proper model in February, now we may be dealing with something else. So I'm just wondering, are there, I mean, are you guys talking amongst yourselves as other institutions in, in, in that regard? I'm just, I'm just really curious about that and just looking how, looking at how we're appropriating funds, you know, for, for the models that we had in place in January and February may not, and this is something we're grappling with even on our end, may not be the right, you know, uh, assignment of those dollars come August. That, that's all I'm, I'm, uh, just raising.
Sure. So if you'll recall, some of the presentations that were given by some of the principal work spoke to the classroom and the flexibility of the classroom. So that, that is something that we have embraced. And so, um, you know, regardless of, you know, we're going to need chairs, we're going to need, um, you know, uh, desks in, in that nature. The, the, the flexibility, the configuration allows us, as we planned, it to be flexible space. That's the whole idea behind the, you know, active learning environment, that it is flexible and fluid. So there's, that's, you know, granular to the classroom. Overall, we, when we talk about what's the, you know, what, what's the discussion going on out there, it can depend a lot on what type of institution you're at. Um, you know, we, we have, uh, tens of thousands of students, much different than a twelve-hundred, um, student, uh, you know, residential place. Everyone has their concerns. So how do you, um, safely deliver education and training? And, and again, it's going to get back to, and it's changing, you know, every two weeks, what the requirements are, what things look like. And, uh, we will do what's best, uh, number one, for the safety of, of our students. And so what August may bring, um, we probably won't know with any complete definition for another few weeks. Um, you know, without getting too, too technical, and I know a lot, a lot of you follow this stuff. It's, uh, you know, you have to see a number of things in order to be comfortable in moving to, uh, uh, other forms of delivery. Uh, one of which is the reduction of cases, which we haven't seen yet, a plateau of the cases. So, so it's beyond, we're considering beyond what's going on around the world, but uh, or learning from that in other institutions, and how does it apply here? But specifically locally, as this is, you know, if you ask about August, this really is going to come down to where we are in the next few weeks to be able to predict what August may look like, uh, as it relates to the spread of, of, of the virus. And then how are we going to be able to provide a safe, uh, environment for our students and our faculty and staff? But it, it is an ongoing dis- uh, consideration, yes. Uh, you'll know, you've seen, I'm sure, institutions have made various calls. Some are, are, are going back, you know, face to face, uh, dorms and all, and others are, uh, have already selected to stay online. And so we, that's a, a call we will have to make, but I want to be sure we make it with the best information, um, possible. And, um, we can, uh, so, so there, there, there are different levels of consideration. You're right down from the classroom to overall, what are we going to do as an institution?
And, and of course, there's other considerations involving, you know, if we make all these changes based on today's situation, we have a cost factor, uh, we have liability factors to consider if we don't do things. And of course, all of this is, uh, dependent upon wh- when or if an effective vaccine is, is perfected and/or better treatments are available. That changes the thing again, so we're in a brave new world here. And it ain't easy. Any other questions, suggestions?
This is Teresa. I do have a question. Thank you for the, for that, uh, discussion, Dr. Evans. Um, there's been discussion just around, not just here in Texas, of course, but across the nation. These funds are being dispersed to different entities for expenditures related to COVID. And what I'd like to find out is what sort of discuss- And what I'd like to find out is what sort of discussions are being had, whether it's at the state level with the community colleges or just here locally, where we're not duplicating our efforts. For example, if people are purchasing towers of Wi-Fi's or hotspots and things like that, I'm just trying to make sure that we are, there's discussions around that we're getting the most, we're spending our dollars the most effectively without having to purchase something that's, again, a duplication of effort elsewhere. Can you talk a little bit about that, Dr. Giovinini?
Well, we pretty much, we've been in close contact with colleagues around the country. And if we look at specifically how our CARES money was determined to be distributed, David Menes and his folks and others were involved with a number of webinars, a number of sessions with colleagues around the state as well as the country as it relates to, you know, what are some of the practices folks are doing as it relates to dispersing those funds? Well, the idea is that we wanted to get as much in the hands of the people that are most in need.
Absolutely.
And we developed a process all around that. So that was specifically to the CARES Act funding that went directly to students. Everyone has some of the same issue related to, you know, a technology and how do we get technology in the hands of students? That, too, was debated. And the resolution really was to best fit our area. For example, we purchased devices, and Susan, correct me if I misspeak here, but we purchased devices which allowed for direct access to the internet, if you will. And that, given the nature of this county and our student body, that actually the purchase of hotspots would not best serve the most, if you will. And so we have, we've had plenty of devices distributed. I don't believe there's a waiting list for any, I was told that a week or so ago. And so we really made that type of decision based upon local in the feedback that we had, and we thought best to reach the students. I have conversations also locally with the other, with the university folks, as well as the ISD people, in the consideration of what they're doing and what's working and what may not work. And so there has been a great deal of due diligence, and we can provide you formally, you know, David did the nice write-ups for us, the cabinet, if you will, related to all the due diligence that was done to bring forward those recommendations. And Bob Pacheco did the same thing as it relates to technology. So we can add that for you, but certainly that's been done. And, you know, we also talked to people throughout the country, like us, urban school, that have a similar makeup of student and have a similar geography which to address. It's a lot different than, you know, some community college in Nebraska serving 11 counties. You know, it's a very different challenge opposed to here, so.
Thank you for that.
Any other comments, suggestions, questions?
This is Quinn Morrison.
Okay.
I just, in response to the chancellor's comments, I myself, and I can imagine that other board members would be very interested in seeing those reports so that we can have a better understanding. And as we speak to people in the community, share that information about the extent to which the college has gone to assist students during this transition.
Thank you.
Anything else? Item 5I, consideration approval of five-year contract renewal with Rave Alert Systems to send mass alerts for college emergency notifications in the amount of $282,587.
Yes, so we are required by state law to auto-enroll students, faculty, and staff into an alert system for our campuses. And this particular product was selected a few years ago as best meeting our needs. It's time for renewal, and staff is recommending a multi-year renewal so that we can have a lower annual cost associated with it.
Questions, discussion? Item J, consideration approval of contract with General Data Tech LP, parentheses GTT, parentheses, to purchase Cisco brand network electronics in the amount of $759,250.16.
So this is just the ongoing effort of the IT department to maintain and update our network infrastructure as needed.
Questions, discussion? Item K, consideration approval of contract with International Consulting Acquisition Corp., parentheses DBA SG Public Sector, parentheses, for a current state assessment and enterprise software implementation service provider evaluation in the amount of $810,346 not to exceed.
So you may be familiar with our core enterprise resource planning system called Colleague, and it's responsible for the administrative functions of the college, but also student records and all of our HR functions as well. That product was selected back in 2002. And there are some challenges with the way it's configured. We're one of, I think, four campuses or colleges nationwide who have an oracle foundation to this product. And so it makes it difficult for us to migrate to their cloud-based solutions and upgrade. There's 40 different products that are sort of hanging off this core system to operate the different processes that we have in place in the college. So much more efficient ways to be able to manage that, a lot of risk in the way we've got it structured right now. The consultant that we have proposed to you would help us develop our specifications for a new product, help us understand where we need to do internal process improvement in order to prepare for using a product the way that it is designed versus all of the customizations that we've implemented with Colleague, and also to better meet the needs of the students. And you'll note things probably with your own students' access to WebAdvisor and so on online to make that experience better for our students as well as our faculty to be able to use the system. So this firm has recently engaged with the University of North Texas to help them prepare an RFP to select a product to migrate to. And so, and they've also got a lot of experience, both in Texas and nationwide, with really complex systems. So this is a big deal for an organization. I've been through this before, it's not fun. But having an outside consultant who's got the benefit of having done this before and having the expertise of having worked with other organizations to help guide us to select the right product and then ultimately start preparing how our business operations need to change as well as for future change management that we're going to need to do across the organization. The implementation of these solutions will be a four- or five-year endeavor and will occur in phases over time. And so this is the first step to organize our house to be able to do this.
Questions, discussion?
Yes, thank you for that. Go ahead.
I was just going to say this, $810,000 is a not-to-exceed amount over five years?
Actually, this work will happen probably over 12 to 18 months, but it will lay the foundation for the work that'll happen over four and five years with the implementation of the system. What we will have at the end of this process will be a contract with a vendor for the product as well as a contractor for the implementer who will help us with the installation of the product once it's selected, as well as a roadmap of the business process improvements that we need to have underway to be well-prepared for implementation.
A whole lot of money.
It's a very complex effort to do this. I've been through this in my past life where we went through a PeopleSoft implementation, and it's challenging and complicated, and it's the core of what we do. So it's important.
We lost her audio.
You did. I don't know why. There we go. I'm back.
She's back.
Yep.
Teresa?
Yes, thank you for the explanation of that, Susan. What is the, what did we find based on, I guess, the work that these folks have done with these other colleges? Is there a particular product that most of them have migrated to?
There are a few major products that are out there. I mean, it's Workday, PeopleSoft, others that are major products. I think there's sort of a split camp of who goes which direction and what their needs are and the complexity of their organizations. And so they have facilitated implementation of both. And it really comes down to the needs that we will identify as well as just a preference once we go through the evaluation process.
How have we explored going to some of these that you just mentioned, Workday, for example, and some of the other platforms? Have we explored going to them directly and saying, here's what we have? Could you do an evaluation? And would we still have to pay for this sort of consulting work?
So we have done some.
In other words, if we have, in other words, if we have some platforms in mind that we might like to explore, is that even an option? That we could go to them and say, here's what we have, this is what we'd like to do? Can you tell us if that's possible?
So we have gone to some of them to get some early demos just to understand how the technology has changed and we're able to take advantage of. However, we have to go through a competitive process to procure this, right? And really, this work is much more inwardly facing assessing what we, the systems we have in place now, our data and how it would migrate, our business processes, how we use the system, where we are using third-party products instead of the system that we have in place, which of those systems can go away as you start working towards acquiring a new product. It's really about the introspection of your organization to help you prepare for that selection and hire an implementer to actually configure it for your organization.
I'm looking at the scope of services, and for $810,000, I'm still trying to figure out. But that just seems like a lot. Do they base it on the number of platforms, the number of hours?
They have a structure in place about the staff that they would have and then the number of hours that are dedicated in an hourly rate. We can share some additional information like that with you. That would be helpful.
I think that would be very helpful. I'm just, that's an awful large amount of money. I'm not saying that we shouldn't do it. I'm just kind of get a better idea, I think. Thank you.
Any other questions, discussion? Item L, consideration and approval of order authorizing the issuance of general obligation bonds, Series 2020, in an amount not to exceed $300 million. This order includes delegation authority, sale parameters, and related instruments and procedures. We're going to have a presentation on this, Susan. Do you want to cover it now or later?
You are. I can cover how this fits into our financial planning, as well as the chancellor will cover some preliminary budget information in a bit. But one thing I will share with you is that, a couple of things that you can expect next week. So between now and next week, we will attach the offering statement, and it's substantially its final form for you to approve as part of this as well. And essentially, it's the description of our organization that will be shared with the public when we actually do the sale. In addition, I have learned that, we've got rating agency meetings scheduled next Tuesday to get a rating for our organization. I have learned that Fitch, in particular, requires us to sign a contract with them for the fee. Experience was that we just sort of settled up at the sale, and that it didn't require execution of a contract. That contract is over $100,000 for that as their fee. And so we will bring that, we will add that to this item for you to specifically approve as part of that process. So anyway, you'll see those amendments to this document when you receive it back next week. But we will spend a moment here in a bit with an update on the overall bond program, which includes what the debt service associated with this will be.
Questions, discussion at this point? I would just like to say that, as it's obvious with this extensive and aggressive agenda that we've been presented, that, on behalf of Dr. Morrison and I think all of the board, we want to thank Dr. Giovinini and all the staff and faculty for all the work that you've done. You know, you've persevered through all of these problems. You have the courage, the sense of responsibility to carry forward. I think our college is certainly operating, if not at full capacity, at least as much as we possibly can. We just want to thank you for all the good work that you've done.
Thank you, Mr. And.
Chancellor?
Certainly. So let me draw your attention, first of all, to the projection of projects over the next few months, and that would be Items 6A and B. We have seven items, I guess, yeah, seven items in, coming up in June. One of the larger ones that we will have throughout the year is the selection of an owner's representation services for the bond program that will live with us over the extension of the bond program, a number of years. And this is really the oversight body, if you will, that will ensure on our behalf that the projects are done on time, on budget, and schedule and so forth. And so this is a very common activity that entities such as us, cities, that would actually procure in order to ensure that the bond program moves forward in a manner in which there's not only just transparency, but accountability towards the whole project itself. There are a couple other projects there in June that speak to power as well as the air compressors at South Campus. There's some software with Exelior, the nursing training. That's a common purchase we have every year, and we can give certainly the explanation for that. As well as, we are a Cisco shop, and the malware that protects us is a renewal that we need to employ. In July, we do not have a scheduled board meeting. In August, there's a couple of projects there around elevator maintenance and then back to, out to Seattle to actually, the construction and the implementation of the welding lab itself. There are some library subscriptions that we'd have, as well as Play-Doh with software renewal, and it's an annual as well that you'll get an explanation on. So a few projects in the next coming months. And again, as we bring those forward, we'll provide a lot more detail around those. Any questions on any of those before we move to some presentations? Okay, thank you. We have a number of presentations today, as Mr. Heed indicated, a lot of extensive work here. And we try to make them as efficient and effective as possible in presenting them. And so we'll move forward, first with the mineral investment policy briefing. And Susan has a cast of a few to assist with that. So Susan, please take it from here.
Yeah, so I'll introduce to you really quickly. We engaged PFM, who's our financial advisor on all fronts, to help us with the investment policy. And we have Mallory Sampson and Floyd Simpson here today. And they'll be sharing their screen so you can see a slide deck and walking you through the thought process on what we've proposed.
If someone's speaking, you're muted.
Hello, everybody. This is Floyd. Can you hear me?
Yes, Floyd.
Okay. Mallory, can you hear me? Hold on one second, everybody. We're just having a slight difficulty. We can hear you. Mallory, clip on mute. There you go.
Can anybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay. My God, I'm sorry.
My God, I'm sorry. You can test and test and it still will not work when you want it. Um, all right, I'm, I'm gonna share my screen and let me know if you guys can see that. Okay, good. Uh, well, first off, Mallory Sampson here. Thank you, Susan. Thank you guys for having us. With me is Floyd Simpson. Welcome to my dining room. Um, ideally, we would all be doing this in person, but we are not and kind of making the best of it. Um, just to give a little bit of background on me, I am with PFM's Endowment Foundation team. I work with our Texas clients, joined PFM about a year ago, previously was at Vanguard with the, working with their large endowment foundations. Floyd, do you want to give a little bit of background on you?
Hello, everyone. My name is Floyd Simpson. I've been with PFM for about six months now. Uh, prior to PFM, I was an associate PM, uh, with FIS Group in Philadelphia, uh, where I manage global equity and international equity portfolios, along with helped with then, um, a merchant acquisition of a five billion dollar firm.
We actually recently stole Floyd from a competitor, so we're very pleased about her, pleased about it. So as you guys know, we have been brought on to streamline some inconsistencies with the investment policy statement with the mineral rights assets, with the, with the investment policy statement with, between the district board and then the foundation board. I am cognizant of the effort that was put into the investment policy prior to this. And so our effort was to maintain the essence of it and, and just strengthen it. Um, so our plan today is do a high-level overview of where you guys are currently with the mineral rights assets and the foundation assets, and then walk through some of the thought process from an investment standpoint. Uh, and then the investment policy statement touching on some of the, um, specifics there. To begin, here is the portfolio as of the end of December. Obviously, this is pre-COVID-19. When you are looking at this, um, the biggest takeaway is that this is essentially a seventy, seventy thirty portfolio. Seventy percent growth assets, thirty percent fixed income. This is an aggressive portfolio. Um, and this is more aggressive than the existing investment policy, uh, laid out. Some of those inconsistencies are in the high yield space on the left. You'll see almost ten percent there. There was a required allocation to high yield. However, within the, the allowable investments, you were only allowed to have a minimum of A-rated bonds. Same with emerging markets equity and, and a, and a couple other inconsistencies. One of the biggest was a lack of a spending, a clear spending policy or a hurdle rate, which is, which is one of the first things that we dug into. Of course, this will have changed in the last few months. Here on the right is another way to look at the existing portfolio. I, I prefer this a little bit better because you can see kind of the lean towards aggressive. Uh, we've got a lot of international developed equity, emerging markets, cash, which may not be necessary commodities and, and, and a larger allocation to REITs.
Yes. And so one thing to point out here is that within the REITs and commodities area, your REITs actually you get a, you get a exposure REITs through the equities because they are publicly listed. Um, so essentially your overweight REITs and then within commodities. Now, I saw that very interesting because, uh, going back ten years, commodities returns just have not been good. It's been, I want to say, negative six percent over the past ten years. And then, um, just based off of your policy, you have a lot of income risk based off of the mineral rights portion. So, you know, I found it kind of interesting to have, even though I can see commodities as a diversifier, it could have been utilized somewhere else within the asset allocation structure.
Any thoughts or opinions on any of this before we keep moving on? Okay. So let's take a step back and talk a little bit about the governing assets. And I know that there's been some, uh, some conversation here. I will preface by saying I am not an attorney. Um, but I will tell you what I do know. So the mineral rights assets are owned by the district. The foundation assets are owned by the foundation. Those mineral rights assets do fall under PFIA, um, Public Funds Investment Act. And, and the, and, and the PFIA is really geared towards the short-term assets. These mineral rights assets and the foundation assets have a long, have a, have a long-term time horizon and a long-term goal. Within PFIA, there is a section addressing mineral rights assets. And they are, they say to, that the assets will be managed according to Texas Trust Code. Well, if you go over to Texas Trust Code, it is also called the Prudent Investor Act. It outlines that assets will be managed according to what the trustees deem as most prudent, which allows those mineral rights assets to be invested in a broad range of items based off of what is deemed acceptable according to the goals. The foundation assets are within a 501(c)(3) and that is managed, that the PFIA does not cover that space. There, I can see the aesthetic of, of managing the foundation assets to the standard of PFIA. However, the foundation goals are very, very long-term. Therefore, you need more growth assets and PFIA is generally more towards short-term. Um, I'm happy to go into this a little bit more, but I want to let you guys know that we made all of our assumptions going forward are, are based off of this, that the allowable investment world is larger than just PFIA. Any thoughts, questions here?
This is Bill Greenhill, and you are certainly, uh, given a pass on, uh, interpreting all of this stuff. And I, I suggest you keep on going. I was the head of the finance committee when this, this started.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree with you. There were some difficulties.
I mean, so many, so many codes, just so many codes.
Been there, done that.
Yes, it's not fun. There's a reason I didn't go into law, and this is it. So anyways, it's, it's, I, I think it's clear and we'll kind of move forward. Um.
Okay, let me ask you, uh,
Yes, sir.
You know, we have that new House bill that has now, House Bill fourteen seventy-two, I think it is, that is incorporated into PFIA, uh, which allows for more lenient investments. Uh, and, and I would, I would hope that you would, uh, keep in mind that, uh, the whole purpose of the mineral fund is to raise money for student scholarships. So, uh, in addition to preserving assets, uh, we also need to look at the yield of these, of this fund because the more money we can make safely, the more scholarships we can give to our students. And that's of great concern to me.
And I think safety is, is, is very important as well. Uh, Conrad and I, and I've had many conversations about this. But, uh, I think, uh, safety is, this is the public money. This is not, uh, individual money. This is public money and we have a fiduciary obligation in order to this money.
I, I, I agree with that, understand that. But even with that consideration, I think we also need to look at yield.
So I, I agree with both of you. It is important to be managing these assets with a fiduciary duty according to their goals. Um, the goals are long-term and to raise assets for scholarships. However, it, there is also that fiduciary duty to be doing that in as conservative and safe way as possible. If one of you guys want to go out and put all your money in Tesla, that's fine. But that's not really the path that you will take with, with these assets. So what I'm saying is you guys are, are essentially both right. There's kind of a middle ground there. That leads us to the spending policy. The, the first question that we asked, and, and Dr. He, you just brought that up, is what are these assets for? Uh, and the assets are for the support of scholarships. Historically, it is my understanding that you guys have been pulling income from the portfolio, but not spinning into the corpus because of a concern of, of depleting the assets. However, I have seen a document that allows, uh, assets to be pulled up to three hundred and fifty thousand. Based off of the pre-corona figures, that makes up about three percent of the portfolio. As a general rule of thumb, when you're pulling money out of a portfolio, somewhere between three and four percent is, is generally deemed as okay to be pulling out without eating in to the corpus and without the risk of depleting the assets in the long run. And a lot of that has to do with this, the hurdle rate. Based off of everything I just said with the income and pulling the three hundred and fifty thousand out, what is, what are your, your thoughts on all of that?
I, I, I think we need to find out what is going into the fund. You know, you mentioned that, uh, of course, those, those monies are, have decreased as, as the gas revenues have decreased. Uh, but we have not had a presentation that I remember on what, what is contributed every year.
Yep.
Not recently, anyway.
Yeah, and, and there are a couple ways to look at that. You can be pulling out what's being contributed and then you can rely on the investment returns to be, to be making that, that contribution for you. Um, the oil market is in shambles and, and so I think over the long run, I don't know how that's going to impact the, these mineral rights assets. Um, but looking at where the assets are now, without assuming any additional contribution, how do we reach the goals of supporting the students in a way that's not going to deplete the assets? So assuming we go with the three hundred and fifty thousand, because that is a larger amount. That's, right now, the portfolio is very growth-oriented, but you're only pulling out the income. So if you, if you transition the portfolio to be a little bit more conservative, the income side is going to increase. Um, generally, people pull out some of the income and then some of the capital appreciation. So say we're gonna pull out the three hundred and fifty thousand a year. That's three, that's three percent of the portfolio. We need a portfolio to make more than three percent. We add on inflation, our estimation is two and a half percent moving forward. So that means the portfolio needs to make at least five and a half percent. And then it needs to pay for itself, the administration fees. It's my understanding with Northern Trust that you guys are spending about forty-six basis points. That's zero point four six percent, um, in advisory fees. That doesn't take into consideration how much it costs to have the investment or any other ad hoc fees. A general rule of thumb is to use, is that administrative expenses are somewhere between zero and two percent. Most people land on the one percent range. Um, so that comes, leads us to the six and a half percent. And then Conrad, to kind of touch back onto what you said about contributions or growing the corpus, sometimes people add on that growth factor an additional percent. We did not add that on based off of the uncertainty of the mineral rights assets increasing or, um, donor contributions. We're truly just looking at the assets where they are now. And to hit that three hundred and fifty thousand a year, hit inflation and pay for expenses, that creates a hurdle rate or a required return of the portfolio of about six and a half percent. So our goal is to allocate the assets in a way that hits six and a half percent on average every year. You're not going to hit that every year by a long shot. But so on the long run, you hit six and a half percent, so you guys aren't depleting the corpus. What, any, what's your thought on that?
I like it.
You're saying that we, we can, we have to plan on earning at least six and a half percent on our investment to break even?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
And, and out of that, what percent goes to scholarships versus administrative and so forth?
Yeah, that's a really good question. We're assuming three percent goes to the scholarships. That's pulling out three hundred and fifty thousand a year. Then two and a half is to make up for inflation, to maintain spending, purchasing power, and then one percent for fees, costs, any type of expenses. I think you're probably spending less than one percent. It doesn't hurt to have a little bit of a buffer.
Okay. Yeah, I think, uh, the foundation, the last action we took, I think we, uh, uh, prepared for four percent, uh, to go to scholarships.
That's fine, too.
Three to five percent is the, uh, is, is the normal range. Of course, we're not in normal times either.
Right.
We're not. I'm ready for them to go back to normal, but that's just my opinion. So say we say stick with the six and a half percent, and if that moves up to seven and a half percent, that's perfectly fine. Now, a lot of people will say that the US stock market has returned ten percent on average every year since the beginning of time. So you should just put everything into equities. Yes, that is true, but there have been some very painful years. Floyd, do you want to run through-
Say that again? I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
I said it's, it's true. The S and P, this US stock market has returned on average ten percent. So if we just put everything into equities, you would more than make your six and a half percent. However, that brings in the volatility factor. There's, um, there have been some painful years and what we don't want to have happen is that if everything's in equities, we're trying to shoot for the moon and you have a down twenty-four percent year and you're still having, and then you're pulling out three percent also. That is going to be painful.
And so within this graph, the, the biggest thing to point out is that, you know, to Mallory's point, yes, historically, you know, you've, you know, this S and P has had a ten percent rate of return. But, you know, that's also everybody having an assumption that you have a normal distribution curve. As you can see here, this is not even close to the normal distribution curve that your students are used to learning about in statistics. You know, if you notice, it is shifted to the right. It is nothing normal about it, which is where the volatility and the variance of returns comes into play. But also why having a diversified portfolio, and in your case, a portfolio that, you know, has an, a bent on income along with a bent on growth is what matters. Because to Mallory's point, and even if you think about it now, imagine if you needed to take money out of the portfolio towards the end of March. If you had to take money out at the end of March, you would have ended up taking money out at the lowest possible time. And you would have not only lost, I think that was close to, at that point in time, the S and P had dropped almost close to thirty percent. Um, but you would have also ended up, let's say, taking out an additional three percent. And you would have never been able to get that three percent back.
It, it's also true that if you're investing in, in funds that are yielding one percent, you're never going to get to six and a half percent.
Never.
Never. So I mean-
And, and we have interest rates now that are, uh, the Fed discount rate is down near zero. Uh, when you go into investing in things like, you know, government bonds and this kind of thing, and then interest rates go up, your yield goes down to nothing and you could eat, you could lose assets.
True.
Well, you have to, you, you have to have a pretty good balance in there.
Correct. And I think, um, you know, to your point, the thirty-year, I want to say is about at one, around one point five. Um, but you know, that I think that's where you notice a lot of your active fixed income managers, you know, started to go more into the corporates because of that exact issue. You know, you've seen them go more into the corporates, you've seen them go more into agencies. And look at that area. Um, and if I thought about, you know, a move that we made going into, uh, going into municipals, because the yield on municipals was, was a lot higher and looked a lot better than a lot of other things. You know, those are other places that, outside of just your US treasury rates, that you can receive, um, some type of yield that's comparable to what you're looking for, for your scholarships.
Are, are you advising corporate bonds?
So, well, we all noticed that within your, um, fixed income allocation, and even if you had just a regular ag bond, you'd have exposure to corporate bonds within the aggregate, the ag bond index.
It is, is very-
Very risky.
Uh, it can be. It is, it's very rare to see fixed income allocations that are purely government or agency. Very, very rare. Um, so the, the big takeaway here- Um, so the, the big takeaway here is you cannot expect every single year to return six and a half or ten percent. It's just not consistent. Our hope is to cut the ends off of this bell curve, cut off some of this painful downside risk. And unfortunately, you'll lose some of the upside, but we want to get closer somewhere to the middle. Hit that six and a half without kind of going through those extreme volatility swings. So, uh, let's take a look at, at what a, what you're giving up and what you are getting. So when you're going to a less aggressive portfolio, so take a look at the left on the blue, um, column. This is the return of just the S and P five hundred historically from nineteen ninety-seven to two thousand seventeen. So that's eight point three two percent. Then if you look to at the green column, that is a sixty forty, sixty percent stock, forty percent fixed income return over the same time period, uh, that's seven point three seven percent, so right around one percent in, in reduction in return. I'm okay with a drop in a one percent return. To me, that's not, that's not a make it or break it. To look to the right, the standard deviation, it, it, standard deviation is a, is a measure of volatility. Um, and it's, it's a measure of risk. That blue line again is the risk of going more aggressive, and the green line is a more traditional sixty forty diversified portfolio, cutting the ends off those bell curves. That's about a five percent reduction in risk for a one percent drop in average annual return. So this is going a little bit more conservative, going closer to the median, uh, and, and really you're not giving up a whole lot.
That, that, that's a good trade-off.
Yeah, to me, it's.
So Conrad, so Conrad, to your point, that's what, you know, that's what going into, even if Barclays Ag got forty percent, that's still, um, a substantial amount within that Barclays Ag, it's still going to be corporates. You're going to have, uh, you're going to have definitely a, a lot of governments, but you're also going to have corporates too within there.
So let's see what's happened recently. So this is, these are several different portfolios up until about two weeks ago in terms of real dollars and then percent. So you guys are closest to a seventy thirty portfolio, and again, I haven't seen your return figures, I haven't seen a report, um, for the first quarter. But if we're taking a look at the dip of a seventy thirty or one hundred percent equity just in the last several months, that's almost five million dollars and is about thirty-three percent in terms of, of assets. Whereas if you're going to go more conservative, you'd have a drop of about, if you go with a forty sixty, that's a drop of two point one nine, which is half that. So this is a really good example of cutting off the ends, getting a little bit closer to that mean return that we're looking for without those big peaks and valleys. Um, I personally really like this because to me, those numbers are pretty substantial.
Have you taken into consideration, uh, obviously, we, we're in a different world.
Yeah.
Uh, but considering all of the stimulus money that has been uh, put into the economy to date, plus others that have been promised, coupled with the fact that this is an election year, um, it would seem that the stock market might be a, the equities market might be a, uh, a pretty good investment certainly for this coming year.
Do you mean because you think the stock market's going to go down more and so it'll be good to provide?
No, no, no. I think it's going up because of all that stimulus activity.
Well, I mean, you think you.
You don't know, you don't know, but, uh, you know, I would think that every attempt on every, in every source is trying to, uh, push in that direction.
So what's interesting about this chart, um, and about this quarter, quarter to date time period. So the April time period was probably the best month that we've had on record. It's probably, if it's not the best, it's the second best. Um, but if you notice, May has actually been negative. Um, and we are looking at the data, you know, one thing is that earnings for companies have not increased, but prices all of a sudden took off. And, you know, if you're looking at the, you know, if you're looking at just basic price to earnings ratios and a couple of other things, you're at points to where you were seeing the tech, actually where you were at during the tech bubble. Um, so with companies cutting their earnings, cutting their dividends, cutting their forecasts, you know, oh, and unemployment being at where it is now without including a lot of the other factors that, you know, that come into play, especially people that don't qualify for unemployment. There's a lot of headwinds that are still, uh, still ahead of us that we, that we know about. I don't think really anybody knows how we're going to get out of asset yet.
It, it's going to be tough, for sure.
Conrad, I hope you're right. I hope that the stock market shoots up through the roof personally and professionally. Um, we will see. I don't, we don't know. It's really scary times. Um, I, historically, election years are positive, which I, I think you brought up because you knew that. Um, hopefully that will help. The, the problem is we're taking on an extreme amount of debt within our country, which we couldn't really afford to begin with. Um, and, and people don't like uncertainty, um, and, and people need to work, so.
Right.
You are, you are absolutely right. This next year is going to be very interesting.
Oh, if I, if I can jump in just with the, the length of things that we've got to cover, um, we, we can get you really quickly to what our recommendation is at this point, hopefully get some feedback on whether you're comfortable with it.
That works.
Okay. So scooting ahead, um, here we have kind of what other people are doing in terms of asset allocation. We can come back to this anytime. Here are returns of what other people have been doing. Again, we can come back to this. Here is our recommendation for an asset allocation, um, for the portfolio. Take a look at the bottom. You'll see it says, based on long-term assumptions, thirty years. Uh, expected return is six point six percent with a standard deviation risk, uh, factor of eight point three percent. You'll notice the table of the, uh, line item above that is the intermediate terms. That expected return is, is four percent for the next five years. The next ten years are not going to be like the last ten years, I am sorry to say. The good news of this is that these assets are going to be invested for the very long term. And so in the very long term, we need to hit that six and a half percent. Um, and with a forty sixty, that is the most conservative that you can go to control volatility by still hitting the return. If you move up to a fifty fifty, you'll add about twenty basis points that, so you'll move up to six point eight percent in return. But you're also increasing the volatility and the risk. So to me, that twenty basis points is not a make or break. Um, I think that's six, the forty sixty, based off the time horizon and the objectives, is probably going to be the best fit for you guys. Thoughts, opinions?
Mallory, this is Teresa. So just, just for sake of just, like, if you were explaining this to your mother, if, uh, you were to kind of give that to us in numbers as we see today, what would those numbers be as far as dollar amounts?
In terms of an allocation, like how much money goes into what?
Right. And if we, just, just high level, if we had the, with, with the forty sixty and we have X amount of dollars today, what that means tomorrow? Just give us an idea. Thanks.
Yeah, of course. So here's one way to look at it. This is not in dollars, this is in percentage. Um, so this is, this is our forty sixty. I, I don't, anyways, this is kind of a model. Um, again, this is not in dollars. The next slide shows the change in percentage, and I am happy to get the numbers for you. Um.
Right, because one thing I think we need, if you want the numbers, we'd actually need what your market value at is as of, let's say, like, three thirty-one.
Okay.
Oh, we can do it. Easy.
Okay. Well, thi- this is helpful here, too, so.
Okay, good. Um, this is a good one. And, and in the essence of time, I'm going to just quickly move to the, some of the, a couple of things within the investment policy statement to see your, your comfort level with that. Um, within the investment policy statement, there's several building blocks that, those are the items that you can customize as much as possible. We have done that to try to fit in the goals. Um, the first is outlining a spending policy, which we have done. Here's a sample of what the, the range and asset allocation will look like. Your manager, whoever it ends up being, should manage the assets according to the target. But you're giving them this range, um, based, so they can move based off of market conditions. Essentially, they can do the job that you have hired them to do, but still within your comfort level. Um, and Conrad, you'll see high-quality corporate there. Uh, and we can talk a little bit about, about that at a later date if you'd like.
I, I also see hedge funds.
Yep, you'll see a target of zero for these with a, an allowable range of up to five percent.
Any questions?
Okay. Couple other things within the investment policy. The, the last investment policy statement listed out the items which were allowed rather than the items that are prohibited. When you are, um, the, the, the universe of a lot of investments is huge and it changes often. Um, so it is easier and simpler to list out the items that you do not want them to hold rather than the items that you do want to hold, just because that universe of possible things that they could use is so large. Um, so that's going to be one of the changes within the policy that you'll see. Hopefully that will make it easier for the advisor to manage according to the policy. And then another one, we've got a safekeeping. So it, it is a best practice in the last ten years to hold your assets in a different location than with your advisor. But, and the, the terminology is a third-party custodian. There are two reasons for this, and I will say that when this began, when people started doing this, I was not a fan of it because I thought it was inconvenient. Um, as time has progressed, I see the validity of it. The two reasons people do this is from a transparency standpoint and from a conflict of interest standpoint. From a transparency standpoint, the Bernie Madoff story would not have been the Bernie Madoff story if those assets had been held at a third party and his investors had been actually getting real reports of their asset. So there's a transparency. And then from a conflict of interest, I will use, um, I will use Charles Schwab's kind of retail space, advice space as an example. I, I like Charles Schwab as a, as a company. They will act as advisor for you, and they'll hold the assets, but, but they're a bank. Now, they make more money by holding their clients' cash through their bank than actually being an advisor, um, because advisory fee is so low. So what you see is that a lot of the Charles Schwab individual investor client portfolios are really heavy in cash, regardless if they want it or not, because there is a conflict there. Our goal as, when we act as an OCIO or when we act as an advisor, and your role as a fiduciary is to try to mitigate all of the conflicts of interest possible. And this is a way to do that, and it is not, um, it does not, not add on significantly from an expense standpoint or an incon- or an inconvenience standpoint. Thoughts there?
I have a question. Um, um, I'm a lawyer and I'm in the finance, I kind of do finance, but I know that there are some banks, some banks have, um, wholly owned subsidiaries, which are trust companies. It, does this policy apply to that? I mean, I, I don't have anybody in mind. I'm just something that I've, I've seen.
Yeah, it, it does. Um, it, it, it does, and it, and it can, and a lot of it, and you will be more likely to read the fine print than I will, but, but yes, it also applies to proprietary products.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so for example, if you are with the, if you're with the advisor, you're paying them to give you advice, you're holding the assets there, so they're getting, uh, custody based off of maybe cash or whatever. And then they're giving you advice and telling you to buy their products, but you're also paying an invest, uh, expense ratio to them.
Yeah, I understand.
Right? It's, why would they recommend any other product?
Well, I understand. I was just thinking of the, yeah, I understand.
Yeah, yeah, I'm with you. Um, it's interesting. Do you guys have any concerns or thoughts about any of that?
I think it's in the best interest, the best practice is, is the way to go. Um, I just, you know, if, if, um, I, I, what I, what my, if I had a concern, it would be if, if, if the foundation sends out a, an RF, you know, a PDF, not a PDF, an RFP, that there are, I guess there are bunches of organizations that will agree to that. I'm sure they would.
Yeah.
I just don't know what the competition is out there.
So I will tell you this, um, you guys are very, eh, ten years ago, there weren't a lot of other, uh, there weren't a lot of OCIO providers. So the, the, the company kind of got the say of what they would or would not do. Now, there are a lot of OCIO providers. So you guys have a lot of power in asking for exactly what you want and getting exactly what you want.
Okay, good. No, that's, that's very, very good.
Yeah, it is good. Last thing, and then we all, I promise I'll let y'all go, um, kind of just performance expectations. We've touched on this again, but it is, these assets are going to be invested over the long run. There will be negative years. Um, and the key is to invest a portfolio in a way that is conservative enough to, so those negative years are not too painful. Um, but to keep a very long-term time horizon, because this is a very long goal. We want the assets to be living on into perpetuity and to be funding the needs. Um, and, and just to kind of keep, keep those expectations in mind would be my, my thought.
And before we get off, we would be remiss if we did not, uh, commend the board for doing the exercise like this because, you know, every, you know, one of the best practices that, you know, that, that you should do, especially as an OCIO or even an investment committee, is that you actually go through, make sure that everything is matching up, and it's, and it's doing exactly what you want it to do, and it's still serving the needs that it's supposed to serve. So, um, kudos to everybody.
Yeah.
And I would like to express kudos to, uh, on behalf of the board, to, to PFM and to, uh, Susan and to our, uh, in-house counsel, uh, for working with you over this, uh, this has been, it's a very complicated thing, and it, the, for that, our finance committee has a history about this, and this is, this is phenomenally good. Uh, after what we've been through, and I, we really appreciate it. Uh, and, and the advice that you're giving, uh, I, I wish we had you before, but, uh, this has been great, and thank you, thank you very much on behalf of the board and our finance committee.
Thank you. We really enjoyed it.
So, ba- bottom line, we're looking at a projected six point eight percent return, had a volatility of seven point something, right, whatever that means.
So, that's a good way to think about it. Yeah, our, our expectation, our assumptions for the next thirty years is that our forty sixty portfolio is going to return around six point six percent.
Six point six.
Yep.
Yes.
You, your spending policy, your goal is to hit six and a half. It's not going to happen every year, but it, it needs to average six and a half as of now, based off of pulling three percent out, that three hundred and fifty thousand.
And that's, and you, you personally guarantee that?
No, I do, I do not.
Trying to see if we're still paying attention, Conrad? Conrad?
I, I'm happy, I'm happy with that if we, if we.
I'm happy, I'm happy with that if we, if we can yield 6.6%.
Yeah.
If bonds go, go south and our yields get down to where it's 1%, 0.65% that we've seen, I'm not going to be happy.
Yeah, and I think.
It's not me, it's not me, but what that means is our students aren't going to get scholarships.
Oh, yeah.
No, definitely.
What is important is to have expectations that there will be, that's going to happen. There will be years where bonds will go down, yields are going to, you're going to have negative years. No matter what, if you don't want negative years, y'all can go into cash and just, that's it.
How flexible will this be if we perceive a year that we think the economy is, 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 we're digging out from all this that we are right now? And we expect a extended growth period? Is this adaptable or do we just, we just sit with it like it is and don't take advantage of the upside? Or, in other words, is there any way to? To change that or adapt that or readjust it as we go?
Yeah, so within the investment policy, we have outlined a range of figures to pull out. So plus or minus 2% to 3% on either side. So if an extraordinary circumstance happens again, like a pandemic. Maybe you pull back, maybe you pull out a little bit less.
But it also allows, in the case of what you're talking about, Conrad, if there's a run on equities and let's say equities runs. Based off of the way that I, that the parameters are. The parameters allow the IPS to actually run. So you, you have room to be able to run. It's not, it's not constrained to where, okay, well, once, once it hits, let's say, 45%, I automatically have to cut back. No, that's not the case. But it does, and this is probably where, you know, having an OCIO and abiding to the IPS coming to play is because, you know, within this guideline. You know, the OCIO should be looking at that and saying, okay, are we in, are we within the tolerance ranges? What are our thoughts? How are we communicating that with the board? How are we talking with the board? And, and also they should be doing, you know, some do tactical shifts, some don't. But there should be some tactical shifts going on within the portfolio that do allow you to capture some of that upside. And, you know, if, you know, if the board looks and says, hey, you know what? We're looking at, you know, the opportunities and, you know, we might want to change, we might, we might think about doing a change. You can do a change down the line. But I would say you do want to, if you do a change down the line, make sure it's because something changes within the spending policy. Because that's a bulk of where, that's, you know, you're getting a lot of stuff from your, from your scholarships. And if there's a scholarship change, it's going, it should be a spending change and therefore that's when you definitely want to revisit this.
So in terms of next steps, you've received a draft of the policy that's consistent with what we've talked about today. And our intent would be to have it on your agenda next week as an action item. If you've got any additional feedback that we need to be aware of before that, that'd be great. The other next step, as you may recall, that we advised the foundation that we needed them to, in order to conform to this. To go through an exercise to select a financial advisor and, or an investment advisor. And they, they will allow me to participate in that selection process, so we'll be able to report back to that. And then we should revisit that exercise every, every few years too. I heard today that you'd also like some information on the mineral proceeds and how those are performing right now as well. And we can get that information back to you as well.
Susan, what is the status of their RFP at this point?
We actually, we did not issue it pending completion of this exercise. Because we want to make sure that the selection of the advisor marries up to them understanding what our investment objectives are and make it, make sure it's a good fit. So upon adoption of this, then, then we will initiate that. They had a, they were provided a draft RFP document that could be used as a guide. So my hope is that they'll be ready to put that on the street in pretty short order.
Okay. Conrad, this is, can we get a copy of this, PFM's PowerPoint?
Absolutely.
To the board members? And you said we have the policy, investment policy. I'm sorry, where did we get that?
It should have been attached on the agenda, is it not there?
It may be.
Okay, if not, we can also email out a PDF just so that you've got it.
Could you make sure we have that, please? Thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
Susan, I have a quick question and thank you for this information. It's just been, it's, this has provided more clarity that we, than I guess I've understood in some time. But is there a way you can just provide us just a timeline, it could be in an email even, of what we need to be doing? As far as the next, next steps, anything that's critical that we need to be looking at, milestones that we need to be trying to achieve relative to this investment policy?
Sure, and actually I think that this, this in many ways for the immediate future concludes the action that the TCC board needs to take. I mean, you'll, the foundation board will proceed with selecting an advisor and ensuring that the portfolio is adapted to reflect this guidance. And then we'll continue to provide updates to you about how it's performing over time. Every September, I believe, I think, the board readopts the investment policy.
Right.
Need to talk about it once a year, I mean, we could do it more frequently than that if needed as well. But, but there will be an opportunity to, you know, to have conversations then about the progress with selecting the new advisor.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
And the foundation board gets, the investment committee at least gets monthly reports of the progress. And those have been included in our board packets every month.
Yes, okay, that's fine then. Thank you.
Mr. Barr, the investment policy is in, should be in 4D tab, 4D as in dog tab in your book.
Thank you.
Mallory, Floyd, thank you very much. If you don't have any other questions or comments, appreciate that.
Thanks, guys. We'll drop off.
Thank you very much.
Bye, guys.
Susan, would you move into our quarterly briefing on the 2019 bond program, please?
So I'm sharing my screen, hold on just one second. Okay, so basically, and we'll get into a better rhythm of this, it's been a little challenging with all of the COVID activity. And how it's disrupted our meetings, but our intent is to get into a regular rhythm of quarterly status reports on the bond program. So that you can have good insight into what progress that we're making. In addition, we are anticipating that in August, we will have drafted, our first draft of a five-year capital improvement plan that reflects the bond program. As well as the other cash activities that we have planned. That'll be a living document that's updated, you know, year every, every year as we continue to, to adapt to the changing conditions. So, but it'll provide a good framework so you can have some sense of what's coming. We, preparing you for today, as we already talked about, that you've got your May action items, which is the order to sell the bonds through a competitive sale. And to delegate authority to the chancellor to execute that. As I mentioned, we've got our rating agency meeting next week and then we would anticipate the sale to occur in June. We will give our agents for all of this the flexibility to make sure that we're reacting to anything, you know, weird that may be happening in politics or the economy or whatever. To make sure that we have that sale at the exact right time. But in addition, in June, as the chancellor mentioned, we hope to come back with the contract for the owner's rep. We've been in negotiations over that and would like to get them on board. So I'll give you real quickly, you may recall there were four big buckets of the bond program. One was the Northwest Campus, we've talked about this previously, you've seen this slide. That again, we've got the architect and contractor in place. We're, we've wrapped up schematic design and are doing pretty significant work with the, with the various principal teams to start getting into more detailed design. This is just a reminder about the number of buildings that'll be coming down versus being renovated. As far as Southeast Campus goes, we've got the architect in place, we meet bi-weekly with them, working on the schematic design. And that's, or the preliminary design that's underway. We have not put on the street yet an RFP for the contractor. We hope that that will happen in 2020. It's a real nice thing to happen for the construction firm and the architects to be both on board and able to work together simultaneously as we get into more detailed design. But we need a little bit more information for them before we can make that productive. Infrastructure, as you recall earlier this year, we also have the benefit that we've been able to sort of jumpstart a number of projects related to infrastructure. We had some good planning around all of that with some consulting help to help us get organized around that sequencing. And we also had the cash to be able to proceed and plan for reimbursement of ourselves once the debt sale occurs. And so you can see a list of the kinds of things that are, that are already underway. This is a very high level, we will get to the point hopefully very soon where we've got a more detailed report that we can provide to you every quarter as to, as to what's occurring. The principal projects, again, we've got a number of what I'm calling quick starts with some of the active learning academies, the welding labs. Wayfinding for all of our campuses and so on, that we've got a variety of things in motion. We'll continue to fine tune that list. As I mentioned, I think last month or the month before, this is probably the area that needs the most, or is the murky is probably not the right word. But the least defined, I guess, of all of them, because we are still working through priorities and how to apply the philosophies that have emerged from each of the panels to these different physical spaces. And it just, it just requires a lot of effort. So this will continue to take shape over the course of the next year. So I did want to hit on that MWBE is a significant need for the, for, obviously for the bond program. SCANSKA, who has been engaged with the Northwest Project, has scheduled a number of vendor outreach sessions. The beauty of it is between them and then the owner's rep that we will enhance our own in-house ability to have lots of outreach to MWBEs. To ensure that they're bidding on different aspects of the project as they, as they are led. In addition, once we get the owner's rep on board, our intent is for them to help us manage a vendor portal. And so they'll start to have more clarity around the timing of when different aspects of the construction will, will happen. And as you know, Andre will continue to work with Minority Chambers and co-host a variety of specific events. So with the owner's rep that we are negotiating with, we anticipate a 35% commitment. In addition, for the construction of the Northwest Campus, we have a 25% commitment with a 30% stretch goal. So we expect very good results with, with that. So in terms of the debt issue, we have sized it at $300 million. We think that meets our cash flow needs. You know, we've got a schedule that could be more aggressive than that. In my experience, the construction tends to lag a little, a little behind in some cases, the ambition about how quickly you'll get it out the door. But we do have a three-year timeframe for, for when we can, under IRS rules, that we should intend to spend the cash proceeds. And so this certainly meets that need. It also, going in at this level retains some flexibility amidst the revenue uncertainties that we've been talking about. And you'll get a briefing here in just a minute from the chancellor about sort of our first look at what potential impacts might be. We think that with the economic conditions that are, that are challenged, that the interest rates are going to continue to remain low and into the future for positions, issuances. We'd always assumed we would do two or three tranches of debt over time to meet the need of the whole program. And so that, the timing of when that next sale occurs, we'll just, we'll figure that out over time as we need it to meet our needs. So we have structured it in such a way that we are, we have a 20-year maximum maturity. We think that that's reasonably conservative and appropriate for this. We based it on a true interest cost of 3.1%, which is conservative in the current market. So we think we'll actually come in low. Right now, that what we've, the maximum annual debt service based on this modeling is just over $20 million a year.
Susan, given what's going on today, what do you, what do you really think the interest rate will be, might be?
So I think that, and I've got Jennifer Arndt, she's with PFM on the line, and she may want to jump in on that. Because they've, they've been able to observe some recent sales that have occurred even since some of the chaos. And so Jennifer, can you jump on? Maybe? We lost her. Oh, there she is. Oh, we can't hear you, Jen.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Okay, great. Yeah, so certainly we've been seeing bonds in this kind of amortization 20 years in the 2% to 3% range, depending on the day. I think what's certainly been tricky about the bond market is just that there's a lot of volatility. So I think the idea in that the numbers quoted here is that even at a very conservative interest rate, you know. We don't expect or hope that you price on one of those days where 3.1% is the going rate for 20-year debt. It's very affordable, you know, even 50, 60 basis points well above where we think the market would be today.
Who determines the interest rate? Is that a market thing or do we ask for a certain rate or how does, how does that determine?
Sure, so this is set out as a competitive bond sale. So what you go ahead and do, you set out the parameters. So you say, you know, we want 20-year debt, we want to pay about the same amount every year. And then you put that out to all the underwriting firms and they come back to you with bids. And we pick the lowest bidder at kind of a designated time. So the market will dictate what, what the rate is. And then you will set in your bidding document here the parameters of what we're looking for. So it's a very transparent process.
Okay.
So, so moving on, what we are anticipating is that we will end up needing about a penny on our tax rate to cover this. And you may wonder how we're able to absorb $20 million into the upcoming budget. And we have been planning for this, so as you may recall, in the current operating budget, we actually reserved about $12.6 million worth of revenue. A, to be able to shift that capacity over to the INS rate next year. But then also it can be used in the current year to establish a reserve in our debt service fund. And then in addition, every year, we have been appropriating $27.3 million in recent history to cash fund capital projects. And we anticipate that we'll be able to reduce that amount partially for the debt service. And then to continue a partial cash funded program for things that, that just needed attention that weren't contemplated as part of the bond. So we think it's very affordable to move forward with this.
Susan, on that first line there, you say this will equate to approximately one penny. Do you mean on the tax rate or of the tax rate?
Of the tax rate.
So there is no increase in the tax. It's important.
It is. Okay, and so in terms of the next steps, again, we've got the order to sell the bonds and delegate authority today. We've got, I failed to introduce them, Bruce Rodeau is also here from PFM. But we also have Jeff Luchel, who's our bond counsel, who's available if there's any questions around that. Again, we'll have our owner's rep in June and then our debt sale should occur in June and July. And then as we prepare for the budget, that's when you'll see us set our tax rate, which will be set at whatever's required. Once we've got all the information from our, the schedule of what it'll take to repay those bonds. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
So this is Bill Greenhill. So we will be passing the, what we call bond resolution at our meeting. I saw a question in bracket, whether or not are we going to approve the offering memorandum? Or are we going to delegate that to you?
Yes, so it is, it is basically finished on Monday. We intend to attach it to that order so that it's part of your action item to approve it substantial form when you take action next week. So rather than having to delegate it, it's about done at this point anyway.
Okay. Okay.
Susan, can we also get the your briefing PowerPoint?
Yes, sir.
Let me just make a couple of things that popped into mind as you went through it. The comment about wayfinding is sort of new to the whole operation. Some of these buildings seem to be have really weird names on them. It just seems to me is will will that be addressed in in this process?
Yeah, you know, we've already started having conversations with the architects on Northwest about that very thing because there are some things that we can do architecturally to help people find their way among facilities. But we also need to go through an exercise to understand the naming conventions that would be appropriate. Interestingly, that relates to how you've got them loaded in your system to register and to schedule faculty and so on. So it's it's more complicated than I had imagined at the front end of it. But but we actually have we're having a wayfinding team help us think about it for the district as a whole to add some continuity, but then each of the architects for the major changes to campuses will be part of that discussion as well.
Well, I think that's important. I had some experience on the DFW Airport Board. Wayfinding is critically important when you're dealing with the general public. I I think that's important. The second observation is I appreciate the first of all, I I really appreciate this status report. I think it's really helpful, certainly to me, and I think to all the members of the board to to have a better understanding of where we are in the process. The the effort on MWB contracting, I think that's important and appreciate the effort that's going on. And I I hope that that is a genuine effort and and it shows up in the results we get. And look forward to reports on as we go forward over time on how we're progressing there. I had one last observation, and that is I think it's important that we focus, whenever possible, on buying local, buying from Tarrant County businesses. And I know this is a big deal with the Fourth Chamber of Commerce. I'm hearing that Mayor Price is talking about it for the city. I I certainly know the Real Estate Council is focusing on it. We're talking about buying local all the way through the process, using local design firms, local engineering, local construction companies. And I know there's certain limitations about what we can do in that area. But if if it is a priority of of the district to buy local, we need to make our people in the procurement process aware of that. And we need to do what we can to encourage it. We ought to be spending our money with our people here at home.
Yes, sir. Well, you'll you'll be pleased to know that the owner's rep that we are having conversations with is a is a Fort Worth firm, so.
That's great. That's good.
We also do plan to have a discussion with you all in closed session about some of the legal constraints that we face. And so we'll we'll spend some time later this afternoon on that very topic.
And I I I'll echo what Kendra said. If you don't hear many criticisms of of TCC, but about the only ones I hear is that we're not doing enough buying locally. And I know that we have, you know, restrictions on that and we got to get the best deal. But anytime we can make that that effort, we need to be doing it.
Chancellor, your microphones off.
Yeah, thanks. Any other questions or comments on this briefing? As indicated, these will be quarterly and we'll also have much more detail in the coming months related to the whole capital plan over the next five years or so, which we will be able to lay out project by project, if you will, campus by campus. So thank you. Thank you, Susan.
And and thank you to the PFM team. They can they can drop off now if they were finished with them.
Are you finished with me as well, Susan?
Oh, yes, yes, yes. Thank you, Jeff.
Okay. Good luck, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Well, one more presentation before a a closed session, if you will. And I want to provide Gina, if you could begin, thank you with a a budget assumption briefing. And we have five slides to to share kind of where we are right now related to the 2021 budget. So Gina, go ahead. Next slide, please. And in a relationship to that, we want to really talk about how we believe some of this may impact or could impact. There's a lot of uncertainty uncertainty and a lot of ambiguity as it relates to how we might be impacted. Want to also provide some historical budgeting practice, which hopefully will help guide us. And then the timeline that we have to getting to an August adoption of the budget. So Gina, move to the next one, please. So specifically, we want to chat about our our the our revenue sources and what we think may happen there. Tuition is at $64 a credit hour. We are entering our third year in a three-year commitment of $64 a credit hour. We don't anticipate any any requests to change that or alter that at all. So rate stays the same. The big unknown is the potential enrollment changes. We are probably up a little bit in the summer when you look at the May semester that we have on we'll have have ongoing right now and then Summer One and Summer Two. That may be reflective of of university students coming home a little early and enrolling in classes. That could potentially be it. The future, as it relates to fall and beyond, depends on a a number of things and and it's really the buyer and the student. And what modality perhaps that we are instructing on, we're intending to come back as we normally would. We will make a more definitive decision on that in the coming weeks. What's the pattern going to be of other students from other colleges and universities? What's going to be the pattern of the 20, 25, 30 million people that are unemployed? Typically, people will think, well, and the economy is not good, people go back to school. Well, when unemployment unemployment rate is 8, 10%, that's that has been true. I don't know when the unemployment rate gets 20, 25% as relates to real unemployment, if that's going to be true or not. The pattern of people going on to school may change as well. You're seeing a lot more and hearing a lot more in the literature, writing about whether it's adults, people who already have degrees, our students, or just the general takeaway that, in fact, skills about skills and it's about getting a job. And there's less talk about maybe some of the traditional education of a credit hour and degree. How might that play into our enrollment that as well? So there's a lot of unknowns there. We are currently down for the fall semester if you want to compare date to date. But that's a little misnomer because our students were not here at the end of the at the end of the spring semester to register like they normally would. In addition, if you recall, one of the action items that we'd asked you to act upon was the $450,000 for the testing, the assessment of students. Typically, that would have been done much more seamlessly than in the past. So there are some different types of of quirks in the system, if you will, as related to COVID that's has impacted how we are enrolling students in the fall. But you were still 100 and a little over 100 days left from the fall beginning. So that will be something that we'll continue to watch, obviously. And that is the big one. That's the one that that has the most potential of fluctuation. The state funding, we have received a tentative notification from the state with a 5% decrease for next year. But that could be greater. A 5% decrease for us is about $2.6 million. And we'll see how that evolves over time. But that I believe, I'm not sure if we got all of our state funding yet in for this year, but we have received notice that that's potential. It's worthy to note that in 2009, there was a mid-year 10% withholding of the final payment for the year. And so I only bring that up because that has been historical in nature and and people tend to go back to perhaps what happened in the past. Obviously, hopefully, that doesn't happen. That creates a lot of lot of uncertainty should that happen. But that's the reality of 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 potential, what could happen to those two funding sources. And Gina, would you go to the next one, please? Property taxes, the preliminary rolls came out in in April. They show some grow growth, but there's significant gaps in the data. And just the other day, you may have seen of the 662,000 properties that are valued about 280,000 or so, value had gone down and about 170 stayed the same, 170,000 stayed the same. That didn't account for growth yet or or didn't count for new things on the rolls yet. So the the protest timeframe was was extended. Obviously, the valuations are supposed to be of January 1, but we're probably looking at, not we, but Ted would be looking at a lot of of protests that may not have come out in the past. And so collection typically have the history of 99 and a half percent collection rate, likely that will be impacted and and perhaps as much as 1% is potential. So the protest deadline day is indicated got was extended to June 1. We will receive updates next week as well as on June 10. But we again don't actually receive a certified number until July 25. So we have a pulse on that as to what the potentials may be there. Gina, would you go to the next one, please? How does it really look as it relates to the dollars and the revenue scenarios? And these are really drafted as illustrative now of where we might be. The 2019 and 20 budget, you can see that with state appropriations 56.8 and the tax 260. We transferred out 27 million that Susan alluded to earlier related to R and R. Our credit hour tuition last year or our budgeted was 64.4 million. And then you can see the rest and how we got to 365,000 or 365 million dollar budget. First scenario, if it was everything was flat. And the only thing that really changes there is the addition that you just heard a little while ago of accounting for the one penny, if you will, INS for our debt service. And you can see how that is accommodated through both. As was mentioned, what was has already been budgeted in this in in preparation of this as well as a transfer out from the 27 million. So we can certainly handle that with a flat budget. If we look at, you can see the scenarios there, a 5 and a 10% reduction. And you can see kind of what those numbers look like as we if any of those were to play out. Now, again, none of that's going to happen right specifically to that there. But these are just examples of both the 5% and the 10%. So Gina, would you go to the next, please? We are historically, from a budget practice, we are healthy. Our fund balance did grow nearly $35 million last year, which would give us a fund balance of close to $300 million. And that is excluding the Gatsby 68 and 75, having to account for long-term liabilities. So we are healthy. A number of entities, institutions, when they have to consider 68, 75, find themselves around zero or less. So we we are healthy in the in the respect that we have nine to 10 months of operations where healthy institutions, public institutions, organizations are considered to be healthy at two or three months. Just to give you a perspective and reminder from last year, we had about a 22 million dollar increase in our budget last year. It was accounted for in in two large, big pieces. One was to establish that reserve for debt service. And the other was both for the inclusion of salary increases and the benefits. So that was the just wanted to give you a reminder of what that was last year. So Gina, would you please go to the next? So as we go forward, we'll continue to evaluate our revenue and enrollment projections. Yeah, and and obviously the the enrollment one that we can we can monitor and know the best, if you will. Never quite know what the state might do and we'll see where the property tax ends up. You know, this is ironically having to work from home and and work and how we're operating now. We had may have not as many expenditures in this given in this current fiscal year. And so we 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 may benefit from that, if you will, from a bottom line standpoint. We are judiciously looking at staffing levels and faculty to consider all factors as it relates to the programs and services that we offer. And this is an ongoing activity. It's not just because of where we are in this particular situation with COVID, but it does bring more light, more attention to it in that, you know, majority of our budget is tied up in salaries and and benefits. And that's, of course, most most organizations are. We are able to proceed with the capital program and we're going to do that to, as you heard a little bit, to take advantage of certainly inflation that's not happening. And we don't want to suspend any of the construction if we do not need to. In fact, some may be able to be escalated, if you will. No promises, but as we get into this, we will find out. So with that, Gina, I think that's perhaps the last, if you go to the next one. And just a question, if anyone has any, or if you want to go back to any one of those slides.
Yeah, Jane, I have a question. Typically, when the economy goes down and enrollment at community colleges goes up, what what's the word on the street? What do you what do you think is going to happen? I I know it's uncertain, but.
Well, if I do, I'd be a rich man, but there's a lot of factors that that come into play. And and it may take time. I do I do firmly believe in the long run with all of this, the community college sector will have more opportunity to serve. Because I think you're going to see more of a of a movement towards the type of work that we do, the flexibility that we have, whether it be credit, non-credit certificates or degrees, as well as the transfer component. And 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 certainly, I think, will become more viable as a consideration for the first two years, given, you know, the finances as well as the, you know, the aura of having to go online and what might, you know, what what how that might impact buying, you know, the buying mentality of folks. I think over time, it'll it'll work itself out. There could be, you know, other events that could happen that may impact that if institutions decide to come back face to face and there happened to be another, you know, flip, if you will, that would require them to go back online. That's all going to impact people's psyche, you know, the buying power. We're all human. And so it's really hard to predict. Again, having 25 million people unemployed is something we've never had. And certainly, oh, you say, well, well, people will go back to school. That's the case. Are they going to have the money to go back to school? Is there going to be infrastructure help in in these next packages, if you will, to help people go back to school, to help to retool? I've seen literature that's talked about majority of the people that have been laid off, which obviously they're adults, want to go into another field. And when they want to go into another field, they're talking about something in a non-traditional way, meaning that they're not necessarily interested in a degree. So the demand in other areas may become, you know, more so than they had in the past. And in many of those areas, we, you know, the community college sector dominates in those areas in terms of essential skills and and short-term training.
And in 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 terms of similar vein, and when you talk about a four-year school where you're paying 50, $60,000 a year and all of a sudden the parents are unemployed, community colleges become a very, very viable option at that point.
Yes.
Conrad, I I'd like to also point out that the TACC and the CATT and the teachers' organization are working very hard to come up with a strategy and to to discourage cutting funds for community colleges. But I think the message that that is going to be sent is exactly what the the chancellor was talking about, that community colleges is going to be a part of the solution and that to cut funding from our, you know, the contact hour model really doesn't work all that well. But cutting cutting community colleges is not going to help things out, make things worse, that we are part of the solution. And this is going to be the message that we're going to be giving our our legislators, Copra, Cleone, and, you know, and and the other leaders. So rest assured that on the political side, we are unified in in a message that we are a part of the solution and are going to fight real hard so that we won't have this quote 5% cut quote that we had before.
Bill, let let me add to that. I think also from a practical side, I know from what I'm hearing from a lot of students and their parents in particular, they're not comfortable with sending their students to the four-year institutions yet, to the techs, the bailers, you know, where I am. You know, they are doing that because even though they're talking about opening up these dorms and what have you, I I know that there's a greater percentage of individuals who doesn't want to do that than otherwise. And and I'm hearing that quite a few of our students, Diane, I don't know about you with AISD, but I definitely know in MISD, a lot of kids are talking about staying close to home this year in particular. So Bill, also from a practical side, I I think you're 100% right. And I think. And I think, I, I think that we might see some positive numbers, Gene, as we go forward, to be honest with you.
So beginning in the very near future, perhaps even tomorrow, we'll begin a branding campaign, if you will, for the lack of a better phrase, around staying close to home, around being healthy, around transfer, around skill sets, that we are convenient. We have a campus within ten miles of every individual. We are affordable. You don't have to rack up years of debt and burden of having debt for a number of years. And then we will follow that up with a form of a marketing campaign around our, our brand, if you will. So the brand effort really speaks to all of the things that you're talking about as to what people are considering and letting them know that, yes, we are here, whether you want to start your first, and intend to, to transfer. But yet maybe that's something that you want to do. And we talk about that, the opportunities for that, as, as well as, you know, the affordability and accessibility that we provide.
Chancellor updates, is that it?
That was it. Anyone else have any other questions on that?
If, if not, we'll take about a five-minute break and then we'll go into a closed session.
Thank you.
Conrad, will we, will we dial right back into this meeting? The same meeting?
Okay, we want to.
Just stay connected.
We want to go to closed session first.
We'll move you over.
Then we'll take a five-minute break.
Okay.
The board will conduct a closed meeting in order to discuss matters permitted by the following sections of chapter five, five-one of Texas Government Code, which include consultation, consultation with attorney, legal issues regarding any item in the work agenda, deliberations regarding real, real property. So we will now take a, we're in closed session. We will take a five-minute break. Thank you.
Thank you.
Not officially, just a minute. Okay, we're back now. I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
And I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
So move.
By Dr.
Second?
By Mr. Greenhill, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Everybody.
Okay.
All right.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.